...justice for all. We'll have a roll call. Madam Clerk?
President Hay, Counselor Bean.
President.
Counselor Boachman.
Present.
Counselor Beal.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Vice President Deena Tally.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Joseph.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Kuschmerich.
Present.
Counselor Tran.
Next we'll have the public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are addressing a public hearing petitions, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the report on the Committee on Records. Counselor Green.
Yes, the report from the last city council meeting was in order.
Will the committee's report be accepted?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the committee report on records. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Next we move on to report of committees. Appointments Committee, Counselor Bean.
President, the Appointments Committee met tonight in full session with all members present. We had two appointments, new appointments confirmed.
Member of the License Commission, Nancy, uh, member of the License Commission, Linda Swears. Member of the Disability Commission, Sheila Talum Raju. And then we had a number of reappointments, and I'll read those quickly. Member of the Historical Commission, Martha Quark, Susan Roza, Charles Molo. Trustees of the Public Library, Christopher Benoit, James Walsh, Mary Rice Hurley, Ronaldo Lopez. Member of the Water Waste Water Commission, Carol Brown. Member of the Board of Assessors, Jerry Lynn Millet. The Veteran Service Commissioner, Michelle Marino. Member of the Energy Commission, Josiah Richards. And Trustees of the Public Burial Grounds, Rodney Gaudreau, Philip Jordan, and Diane Olet. And Member of the Board of Health, Ian Murray.
Motion to accept the Appointments Committee report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Appointments Committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Next we move on to Communications. Fr. Hon. the Mayor, we have nine letters of appointment. Dear Honorable Counselors, I hereby appoint and ask for your confirmation of Ms. Christopher Rhodes of 50 Hancock Street, Pittsburgh, as a member of the Human Rights Commission for a term to expire on May 1st, 2017. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong.
Appointments.
Honorable Counselors, I hereby appoint and ask for your confirmation of Mr. Richard Marino of 10 Cherry Street, P.O. Box 7038, Pittsburgh, as an associate member of the Human Rights Commission for a term to expire on May 1st, 2016.
Appointments.
Honorable Counselors, I hereby appoint and ask for your confirmation of Ms. Barbara Nealon of 58 Goodrich Street, Pittsburgh, as a member of the Human Rights Commission for a term to expire on May 1st, 2017. Honorable Counselors, I hereby reappoint and ask for your confirmation of the following individuals to the Council on Aging: Annie Di Martino, 16 Harrison Ave, Pittsburgh, Mass., term to expire January 1st, 2018. And Richard Hattila, 1469 Ridge Road, Pittsburgh, Mass., term to expire January 1st, 2018.
Appointments.
Dear Honorable Counselors, I hereby reappoint and ask for your confirmation of Ms. Basile Tolos of 81 Old Deerfield Road, Pittsburgh, Mass., as a member of the Disability Commission for a term to expire on February 1st, 2018.
Appointments.
Dear Honorable Counselors, I hereby reappoint and ask for your confirmation of Mr. Paul Fontaine Jr. of 43 Valley View Court, Pittsburgh, Mass., as a member of the Planning Board for a term to expire on January 1st, 2020.
Appointments.
Dear Honorable Counselors, I hereby reappoint and ask for your confirmation of Mr. Michael T. Hurley of 859 Ridge Road, Pittsburgh, Mass., as a member of the Planning Board for a term to expire on January 1st, 2020.
Appointments.
Dear Honorable Counselors, I hereby reappoint and ask for your confirmation of Mr. Marlon Madero of 7 Beekman Street, Pittsburgh, Mass., to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library for terms to end on January 1st, 2017.
Appointments.
Dear Honorable Counselors, I hereby reappoint and ask for your confirmation of the following individuals as registrators of voters for the City of Pittsburgh: Catherine Cody, 45 Clyde Street, Pittsburgh, Mass., term to expire February 1st, 2016. Rosemary Wadi, 1466 Pearl Hill Road, Pittsburgh, Mass., term to expire February 1st, 2017. Ellen Hughes, 15 Haskell Street, Pittsburgh, Mass., term to expire February 1st, 2018.
Appointments.
Next we have communications and reports from heads of departments. We have one from the City Clerk's Office dated January 6, 2015. Dear Counselors, in order to respect the observance of Rasha Shana on September 15th, 2015, I recommend that the proposed 2015 municipal election calendar be amended to reflect the attached version. Please note that the proposed date for the preliminary has been moved to September 22nd, 2015, which thus affects other filing deadlines, which have all been changed accordingly. Very truly yours, Anna M. Farrell, City Clerk.
Motion that we accept the recommended changes?
Need to be under suspension of the rules?
Okay, motion that we make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second the motion.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules on Order 006-15 authorizing the city clerk to set the dates for the 2015 municipal election calendar. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
Opposed?
Would you be adopted?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt 006-15. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Other communications, we have the account statement from Pittsburgh Retirement System.
Will be placed on file.
You should all have. Will be placed on file. Notification for mass development of upcoming project. It's a short letter. Dear Members of the City Council, this is dated December 15th, 2014. On November 20th, 2014, the Massachusetts Development Finance Agency gave preliminary approval to issue a revenue bond on behalf of the Young Men's Christian Association of Central Massachusetts. The proposed project consisting of renovations and improvements to existing facilities would be located in Worcester, Westboro, Pittsburgh, Lemonster, and Lancaster, Massachusetts, at the address listed on the attached summary included for your information. The bond would be issued pursuant to Chapter 23G and 40D of general laws. The agency's policy is to advise the appropriate local and regional planning agencies to ascertain the relationship of a proposed project to any existing state, local, or regional comprehensive plan. Purpose of this letter is to notify you of the project and to request that you advise in the event that the proposed project conflicts with an existing local or regional comprehensive plan. If you would like further information on the project, or if you would like the agency to consider any comments you may have, please give me a call. Sincerely, Simi Silton, Vice President. And last, we have a communication for the proposed budget from Central Mass Mosquito Control Project. It's a lengthy document. You should all have it.
Will be placed on file.
Placed on file. Now we'll move on to the agenda. Start with 316-14, hearing. High Gear Products Incorporated, 640 Crawford Street, to store flammable liquids at its Crawford Street Warehouse Distribution Facility in the specific quantities with classifications outline here within. Declare the hearing open. Are there anybody here this evening representing the petition?
Yes.
Please state your names.
Sharon McCarney.
And Bob Walks, CEO.
Okay.
We're here to answer any specific questions you may have relative to the petition request. We're seeking to store hazardous material liquids in our building at 640 Crawford Street. And we're working with the Fire Department and an outside consultant to meet all the compliance issues related to it.
Questions or comments from Counselors?
Do we have any communications? Mr. President?
Yes.
Do you have any communications from any department heads on their concerns or sign-off?
Fire Department representative is here.
Do we have a communication or any kind of?
I don't have any communications.
Well. We do understand that there's one open item. We've been working with the Fire Department in a fairly extensive punch list of building upgrades. There's one engineering drawing that requires a shop drawing that requires an engineer's stamp. And we realize that we're waiting on that. The communication that we had today with the company, the contractor that's doing the upgrade to our building is that we'll have that tomorrow. So we are waiting on one component.
There's no objection. I'd like to have the representative from the Fire Department speak as well.
Is there any standing over here?
Yes.
Honorable counsel, thank you. As they said, it's a business. It came to us for approval. My predecessor is Sally Tater. I'm Phil Jordan, by the way, Fire Prevention Bureau. I'm taking over for Sally. I'm learning a lot of the proceedings as you, which is a lot of questions. However, what's happened is they've applied for a permit to store a large amount of flammable fluids into a building. They've shown plans to give extensive renovations to one section of their warehouse, heating it, changing over somewhere around 500 something heads to fast response sprinklers to handle the increased hazard in the building. However, after reviewing the plans, we found that the plan did not have a wet seal signature, a wet seal and a signature stamp. So that was our major concern, only because of the amount of hazard in that building. And not to single these folks out, because I am fairly new, I did call our Sister Cities and I did confer with my chief, and everybody agreed that that was a very fair and equitable demand, considering the amount of flammable fluids in that building. When you have a plan that's drawn up and it wasn't an engineer's seal and a signature to match, we felt it was like almost writing a homework assignment without signing your name to it. They have come over before the meeting, expressed their interest. There's some faces here I haven't met before. They said they're willing to work with me. However, my chief has asked me to come here because we're, you know, at the last pitch of the ballgame. And as far as we're concerned, that plan did not meet compliance in our eyes. I told them I'm willing to work with them, get the permits out they need as soon as possible. But we wanted to give you the information that if you want to vote on a petition for this, that's fine, but you need to have the information to know that there's a sprinkler system in design that wasn't in compliance as of this moment. So that's the information. Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments by Counselors? Counselor Green?
Yes, my question is, what are the chemicals that are being stored there that are flammable?
They're consumer products. They're automotive aftermarket liquids. So anything that you would use to clean your car, go into the engine, waxes, washes, fuel cleaners, things like that. I mean, consumer sized containers are palletized.
Okay, and how much volume are you going to be storing there at the facility?
Right now, we have approximately 95,000 gallons in total. About 95,000 gallons. Now, again, that's small packaging, container sizes that could be four ounces to one gallon. Anything that you would find at an Autozone or a Pep Boys location, those are the types of products.
Counselor Bean? Oh, Counselor Green.
Are you increasing the amount of inventory that you're keeping in that facility, or is this?
No.
Has it been existing?
It is. Just a little bit of background on how this came up. We manufacture the product in Lemonster. That's our chemical plant. So the production is done in Lemonster, and the Pittsburgh facility is warehousing raw materials, cans, bottles corrugated, and then two sections of the building are to house finished goods. And what happened is the founder of the company passed away approximately six years ago. And we, the oversight in the Pittsburgh facility changed. And when we went to apply for our flammable permit, or to renew our flammable permit in Lemonster, we went to do the same thing in Pittsburgh. We realized at that point that one was not, there wasn't one in place. So that's when we started the communications with the Fire Department. And what steps did we need to go through to get this done? We hired the Fire Protection Engineer to do all the engineering in the building. We've done a number of upgrades to the site, and really, this is the last component. But that's how it came about.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Bean.
Through a couple of questions. First, how important is it that this gets done tonight? I mean, my concern is that without the Fire Department's sign-off, I have a major problem of approving this, obviously.
We understand. We understand a wholeheartedly.
Postpone the hearing and waited till the, waited till the Fire Department got the complete, completed plans and put their approval in if they're so willing. I'd be willing to maybe ask that we table the, or table the order, or postpone the hearing, or hold the hearing, I guess would be the term, until such time as we have a report from the Fire Department. But without the Fire Department report, I would feel negligent by approving it, because that's why we have the experts here to make sure we're looking out for the public safety.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate the business in Pittsburgh, by the way, too.
Thank you. Yeah, so we do, too. We like working in Pittsburgh. We employ people from the local area. And we have absolutely no qualms with this. I think there was a little confusion. We did have, the plan is certified and stamped by an engineer. However, the shop drawings that are derived from the actual plan, they were not stamped and wet sealed and signed. So when that became an issue for us and we understood it, we asked for that and just have not have it in our hands at this time. So it's fully intended.
I'll make a motion after you.
Counselor Beal.
So the material that you're going to be storing there, it's flammable, but in the event that it becomes flammable, are the fumes toxic? So we wouldn't, if, let's say in the event there was a fire, there wouldn't be any danger to the neighbors living in the neighborhood, the wind blowing the fumes into their location? And is there any of that, or?
The sys-
You know, I might defer to Phil Sherman, our Fire Protection Engineer. Would you have input on that, Phil?
My name's Philip Sherman. I did the workup for them. I'm a consulting Fire Protection Engineer. Obviously, the byproducts of any fire are toxic. Nobody's going to say that they're not. This, these products, as Bob indicated, are palletized boxes of small containers. So very much like you'd find in a hardware store aisle. More of it, obviously. The sprinkler system is being reworked to accommodate that product. And in fact, the height of the storage has been drastically reduced to fit into the capabilities of the sprinklers that are there. So we'd expect the sprinklers to control the fire to a relatively small size, certainly with, you know, with the efforts of the Fire Department to be able to maintain it far below anything that would harm any neighborhood.
And I fully understand that there's, you know, that anything that burns, the fumes can be toxic. But there's also a level that, I mean, we've all seen on the news where whole neighborhoods had to be evacuated because of the toxic fumes. And I was wondering if the Fire Department, do they investigate that type of situation, worst case scenario, when they're approving something like this?
Is that a question on me?
Yes, please.
The center building, it's, the building they're working on is actually three sections. Each section is divided by fire doors. Okay, the outside sections is what we call a dry pipe sprinkler system, so they don't have to heat it. What they're doing is converting two sprinkler risers, adding those 500 somewhat heads of sprinkler protection. They are quick response sprinklers. The spacing is within the NFPA 13 guides that I've seen. However, any fire that gets going is a problem. Flammable fluids, they propagate fire. That is why they're going to a wet system in the center building, because the water is already there at the head. You don't have to wait for the system to fill. It's quick response. They're going, as far as I can find, they're going against, going with every code to keep in compliance with that. However, is the hazard still here in that warehouse? Absolutely. There's definitely more hazard with fuel. However, they're following the guidelines and keeping it compliant with keeping that fire to a minimum. And they will have to heat that center section of the building, so there is more cost incurred on the folks here to maintain that type of protection. And I believe if I read the report right, I think the minimum height was around six feet for the products, so it's not like it's going to be stacked up high.
Okay, thank you.
It appears reasonable by code and compliance, from what I've seen.
Thank you.
I might note also that the area where our warehouse is housed is highly industrialized, is an airport, that it's not well populated there and all around it. It isn't located in a residential area at all. I understand your concerns, obviously. Of course, everyone within that proximity we need to be concerned for. But it is in an area of very low residential population.
Counselor Boachman.
You said you had a plan in Lemonster, Mass?
That's correct.
Yes.
How's your safety record with OSHA and all that? Do you have a good safety record?
Absolutely.
No violations whatsoever?
The, there was, there was an incident three years ago. I'm trying to remember exactly what it was.
It was temporary?
We had, we had, we had an inspection, and we had a complete OSHA inspection at that time, where they identified, you know, a very short punch list of items that were rectified.
And it had to do, I recall, it was an eye wash station that wasn't at the proper temperature. Certain distance between where you needed a shower for the lab. So they were, they weren't, they were still violations that we had to address, but they weren't egregious. And certainly, there are no injuries or any significant, you know, problem.
The other question, how many people are you going to employ in this plant for the Pittsburgh area?
Right now, we have about 10 employees.
10 and a half?
Mm-hmm.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking at your new application sheet, and it has a line that says total quantity of all combustible liquids to be stored. 465,275. That's a big number. Can you explain that number a little bit?
Absolutely. So we were advised that this isn't something that you want to do a number of times, to come in and amend a permit of this nature. So we were advised by the Fire, by Lieutenant Tater, as well as by our engineer, to go for, to when you're, when we're putting down what we, what we're requesting, to go put in the maximum that you would ever need. Now, having said that, we are not going to store that level without permission from the Fire Department, without the proper upgrades that would be possibly necessary to do that. As Bob indicated, we have currently right now-
95,000 gallons.
And have no immediate or even long-term goal right now of increasing that. However, we are a business and we do plan to grow. And so if, in fact, at some later time, we wanted to do some major upgrades to that building that would help us accommodate more storage and we needed to do that, we would, we would want to have that available to us.
Right, even, well, on the application, it says that all tanks and containers are considered full for the purposes of licensing and permitting. So it sounds like between this little thing and the Fire Department, that you've got things in a row.
That's what we-
We've just got to finish it off.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
I just want to thank you for doing business in Pittsburgh, coming to the table and doing the right thing, bringing this before us. I mean, it's not always easy. We try to be business friendly as much as we possibly can. The only, I think, residential you would find on the other side of the tracks, you have a lot of residents in Lemonster with Heritage Gardens and stuff like that. You have dense population of people behind you, but around the front, you don't. But there are people that are behind you.
Upwind.
It's just an industrial area. But again, thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you for bringing it to compliance, and we appreciate it. And hopefully, we can get this wrapped up within the next two weeks.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your time.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition?
I think I gave the Fire Chief's view on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion based on testimony of Counselor Bean.
President, I would move that the hearing be continued until our meeting on January 20th, and hopefully, within that time, the Fire Department can get the required stamped plans. We can get this thing moving forward. Company's wrong.
It's a motion made and seconded to continue the hearing to Tuesday, January 20th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing has been continued to January 20th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we move on to Orders Finance, 00315. Order that the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Office, Department of Fire Services, for the Fire Safe Program, FY15 grant, in the approximate amount of $6,123 for the purposes of said grant.
Motion at 0315 up to and including 0515 to send to finance.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to send 003-15 up to and including 005-15 to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It'll be sent to finance. Ordinance 31214, amending Chapter 169, Section 42 of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh, entitled Parking Meter Zones by deleting therefrom as outlined in the enclosed ordinance. River Street East to Boulder Drive, reference petition 228-14, final reading.
Move, be moved to a certain final reading, ordained, ordained and enrolled?
Enrolled.
Yeah, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
Motion made and seconded to send 31214 to its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to send this to the Parking Commission if I possibly can, back to the Parking Commission.
Counselor Boachman, are you asking that this be referred to the Parking Commission in addition to passing it?
No.
To final reading?
I would like to see it go back to the Parking Commission and let them come back with a recommendation.
We already have a motion and a second on the floor to pass it to a final reading. So unless there is a motion to amend, or-
I'll make a motion to amend.
The individual who made the motion would have to amend it. Is that correct?
No. Anybody can make a motion to amend.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to send it to a final reading.
I'd like to send it to the, I'd like to make an amendment and send it to the, back to the Parking Commission.
The options are either we send it to a final reading and not to the committee, or, and then you oppose it, or we do not move forward with the final reading and send it to a committee. But there's a motion made and seconded on the floor to have the final reading. All those in favor of sending it for a final reading?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One in opposition. 313-14, an ordinance amending Chapter 169, Section 26 of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh, entitled Time Limit Parking by Adding There To. See enclosed ordinance, Main Street West and East Side of Upper Common, reference petitions 22914 and 23014, final reading.
I make a motion that we send back to Parking Commission?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to send 31314 to the Parking Commission.
I'd like to speak on the motion.
Speaking on the motion, Counselor Beal.
It's my understanding that the Parking Commission or Parking Committee, whatever you, is just giving us recommendations as to whether or not they approve of this or not. It's not, it's coming back to the council with a recommendation. But on this particular petition, I think that seeing this is going to the final reading, there's always, there's already been ample time for everyone to speak their mind on it. So I will not be voting to send this back to the Parking Commission.
May I speak on the-
Counselor Boachman.
When we sat here talking about these petitions, and I brought up different things about it, I was told it was going to be two hour parking, not the meters being taken out, two hour parking. And I said, okay. I was told to read the, read the thing that was on the agenda, and I read it. And it said two hour parking. Now, I'm being told by the City Treasurer that we're going to remove the meters, and we're just going to go up there and chalk lines. So I want to go back to a recommendation from the Parking Commission to see what they recommend before we start yanking out meters and then put them back in. That's all I'm asking. If they say yes, pull them out, and I'll go with their, with their recommendation. That's all I ask. I was told to read the minutes of the last time, the very first time we discussed it, and I read it. And then I was on the, when we started talking about it, I was arguing the fact that we were pulling out the meters, and I, they were, I was told specifically at this table that we weren't pulling out the meters, that we were allowing two hour parking. And now we're pulling out the meters, so. And then I wasn't going to vote for pulling out the meters.
Counselor Joseph.
The only thing I want to say is I think that we can pass this tonight without the total overview of what the Parking Committee or Commission is going to recommend. I mean, just because we pass this tonight doesn't mean that there's going to not be a different recommendation from the Parking Commission. Right now, this has been what we've been working on for the last six months. It's here in front of us, but that doesn't mean that if this Parking Commission comes together and says, I think we should have two hour limited parking, but with meters, that would be a recommendation of that committee, and it would come back to us in the form of another ordinance. But this is the one we've been marching to, and I still am in favor of going forward with the final reading.
Counselor Kuschmerich.
Mr. Brooks, the City Treasurer, worked with Counselor Caddy and I. His initial reservation was that the meter should not be taken out until it gets to the third and final reading. His concern was that at some point- His concern was that at some point along the line, they could hit a snag. So he said, I would hate to remove the meters to get to that point and then, you know, have to put them back in. So I think that was that was Calvin Brooks's initial concern over removing the meters. But we have been speaking about this for six months. It was in full support of, you know, from the business community, from the neighboring population, from the vast majority of councils around this table. And to get to the point where we all agree that there should be two-hour parking, what would the point of a meter be if we're talking about, you know, two-hour parking, free two-hour parking? There would be no point to have a meter there. And in fact, we've heard from the businesses there, people are still hesitant to abide by the two-hour parking that's there temporarily because they still see the meter, that people don't want to take advantage of the free two-hour parking. They're wondering how they can feed a meter that's already bagged because they're confused by the messaging there. So I think if we're going to go through two-hour parking, then we should remove the meters as hastily as possible to, you know, to do exactly the intent of these initial petitions, which is to help businesses out, help get customers frequenting the businesses on Main Street more often without, you know, harassment. Thank you.
Counselor Caddy.
During the parking committee's last meeting, we uncovered a traffic parking study that was made in 2008. And there were 12 recommendations from that study, and not one of those recommendations have been acted on. In the study, it shows that it breaks the city up into five sections: the Upper Common, the legal section, which is over near the courthouse, the central business district, which is down near the old Woolworths, that parking garage, the Depot Square District, and then you have the lower Main Street District. What the study shows is that it shows the demand for parking, and the largest demand for parking is around the courthouse. The lowest demand is in the Upper Common. During the months that we discussed this, I think everyone in this room observed that the areas that we are making two-hour parking was there was no demand. And what was happening in the parking guys were going up there to tag a car, one car in 30 spaces. And it just seemed to be ridiculous. The problem right now is during all the construction on Main Street, if they have to close some meters, they put red bags on them. And when you see the red bag, it means stop. It means don't park. The confusion in the Upper Common, when those red bags went on, they weren't they were red, but they in small letters said, happy holidays, you have free parking. Well, the bonus, the florist was experienced problem with their customers. The customers didn't know that they could park there. So Mr. Laxall helped me, and we got some signs, some two-hour parking signs up there. But if you leave the meters, then you're going to have to leave the bags on them. It doesn't make any sense. And I don't remember when we were discussing this months ago, that we were even talking about the meters. I don't think we had that discussion about taking them out. But if we pass these free two-hour parking, the meters aren't necessary. And until there's a change in the development of the Upper Common, there's no demand. But what may happen, and what the study was trying to explain, is that the legal district, which is within walking distance of that area, if people want to park long term, they can drive to the Upper Common and park their cars and walk over to the courthouse. But the idea behind this isn't it shouldn't be revenue. It should be what can we do for our customers? What can we do for our public? What can we do to help Main Street, you know, get people out and walking? So I would definitely support sending this to the final reading. A few of us put an awful lot of work into this one. I hate to see it die tonight.
Counselor Bushman.
I understand what you're saying, Counselor Joe. But when I sat here, I was told that we weren't taking the meters out. We were not taking the meters out. I'll go along with the two-hour parking. I have no problem with two-hour parking. But my problem is that we said we weren't taking I said I wasn't going to vote for a thing that if we were taking the meters out. So you get the bags over, and I got glasses, and I can see as I drive around, free two-hour parking. I can see it. So I don't understand what's the big hot thing about saying that. And the construction's not going to be there for a whole all of next year. It's going to be done in a very short amount of time, I presume, I was going to think. I'm pretty sure on that, because they're going up Main Street up to the up by the bar up there, the Boulder. But, you know, I'm not in favor of taking meters out at this time unless it goes back to the parking commission and let the parking commission come back to us and say we and that and that report that you read, I started reading the same report, and it says code enforcement. On every paragraph that I read, it says we must have code enforcement. Without code enforcement, we're wasting our time. So I feel strongly that the meters stay in there, put the bags on there, they still can park the two hours free time. The parking meter guy can go up there and mark the tires, and we go from there.
Counselor Bean.
The whole idea behind this was not to really give people two hours of parking. It was an idea to get people in and out of that area so they could go to the bonus is they go to the historical side, they go to lawyer's office and park for 20 minutes, 30 minutes, and that. I mean, we give it up to two hours, but that wasn't our, you know, our hope is that there'll be a lot of movement in that period of time. And during this trial that we had, putting those bags over there really was hard for people in the sand. I mean, when you see a bag over a meter, typically, it says you can't park there, you know, unless you know, and not a lot of people see that little, say, you know, happy holidays. And you wouldn't believe it anyways. I mean, right? I mean, you probably think you're going to get a ticket. And that happened up at the bonus. I talked to the folks here. They were they were having people that were afraid to park there. They still didn't know until they took, you know, and made a visible sign. So we need clearer signage. And I think we're not talking about removing the posts. I think we're just talking about taking the heads off, which can be easily put back and forth, depending on what happens, you know, in the future. So I think it gives it gives a clear signal to people that there is free parking up to two hours, and, you know, and they can do that. And by just removing the heads and leaving the posts there, it'd be the easiest way to do that. So.
Move the question.
Healed, my turn.
Motion has been made and seconded to send 313-14 to the parking committee for further study. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Does not pass.
Motion to send 31314 to its final reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to send 31314 to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One in opposition, Counselor Bushman. Passes 00715, an ordinance that Chapter 169, Section 76 of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh entitled Stop Intersections, as most recently amended, be further amended by adding there to stop sign on Scott Road, Plymouth Street, Newtonville Ave, direction of traffic both for all three, at intersection of Ringe Road, Madison Street, Ryanald Ave. This is a first reading. Motion made and seconded to send to its first reading. Solicitor Barrett, you want to make?
If I might, Mr. Vice President, I just wanted to address the council about this ordinance, which I prepared. As you know, I believe there was a report from Officer McNamara wherein he opined that he felt that this would not be appropriate and would not pass under the Model Uniform Traffic Control Devices Regulations. I believe that with all due respect to Officer McNamara, he's reading it more strictly than than is necessary. As I review the regulations for stop-type intersections, it seems that it be appropriate that a stop sign be placed at these intersections. Additionally, I believe that at least for Plymouth Street and Newtonville Ave, we do have a report, I believe it was sent to the council from Tony Marusha in the city engineer's office, indicating he believes that it's appropriate under engineering standards. So I just wanted to make mention of this, that I believe that it is appropriate, notwithstanding Officer McNamara's opinion. I will try to talk with Officer McNamara about that. But I quite frankly believe he's reading the manual a little bit too narrowly, because I believe under the under the manual stop intersection would be allowed at these intersections.
Give a motion and a second to send 007-15 to its first reading. Any question, a discussion on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's been sent to a first reading. Petitions.
Motion to send 815 to a public hearing on February 3, 2015.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to send 008-15, Comcast of Massachusetts Third Incorporated to install a new conduit system to provide service to 480 Main Street as outlined in the enclosed petition, to a February 3, 2015, public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's sent to a public hearing on February 3, 2015. 00915, Counselor Paul Bushman to install cameras at every intersection where there are traffic lights so that tickets will be generated automatically. Revenue generated from this project would not go to the state, but would stay with the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to send 00915 to the public safety committee.
Mr. President.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to send 00915 to the public safety committee. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Bushman.
I'd like to make an amendment on that petition here, sir. I should have been in all fairness to the other counselors, Amy Green, Mike Chris Merrick, Counselor Joseph, to add their names. When I went to the city clerk's office and they filled out the petition for me, helped me fill it out, I had to leave in a hurry because I had bad cramps in my stomach, and I wasn't feeling good. So in all fairness to Amy Green, Mr. Chris Merrick, and Counselor Joseph, that their names be added to this petition.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to amend 00915 to include Counselors Joseph, Green, and Koushmeric to the petition. All those in favor of amending the petition?
Aye.
All those opposed? 00915, as amended as before you.
Send 00915 to the public safety committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to send 00915, as amended, to the public safety committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and seconded.
Mr. President, I got one thing to say to the public.
Counselor Bushman.
Yes. First of all, I want to say Dean Tran, I hope you get better because he's awful sick. Second thing, I just want to notify the people in my ward that the chief is going around at snowstorms, and they are towing cars, and they are ticketing on storms. So I'm going to ask the people at Ward Two, please move your cars because they're pulling they're tagging and they're towing on days of snowstorms. Thank you very much.
Counselor Green.
Yes, I'd like to just announce that the Ward One neighborhood meeting will be Thursday, January 15, at South Street Elementary School from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And our guest speaker this month is Scott Ellis, that will be clearing the air on the overhead noise from the airplanes. Thank you.
Counselor Koushmeric.
The Friends of the Pittsburgh Senior Center would like to welcome the public to a tea and luncheon celebrating Valentine's Day on Tuesday, February 10, from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. Learn about the origins of the holiday, thanks to the Pittsburgh Historical Society. The cost is $5. For non-members, please sign up by Friday, February 6, 2015. The Friends of the Senior Center would also like to invite the public for St. Patrick's Day Dinner and Dance on Saturday, March 14, 2015, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., catered by Sean Patrick's. The cost is $15, and tickets are available at City Hall and Senior Center and must be purchased by Friday, the 6th, March 6. Thank you.
Counselor Bean.
President, lastly, I'd like to wish happy birthday to Counselor Beazel.
Oh, happy birthday, Counselor. Happy birthday to you.
I didn't ask him a song. I just said, would you be adjourned, Mr. President?
Has already been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, Counselor.
You don't want to get me singing?